Calhoun Rapids City Council Meeting of 14 January 2020 is now called order. I'd ask if you have not signed the clipboard when you came in, if you would please sign that before you leave this evening. Also, those with cell phones, if you would please put them on display. We'll call a member, Daniel.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markraph.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you this evening in our city council chambers. Also, we're on Channel 14, which will be viewing our council meetings on Wednesday evenings. I just have a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Monday, January 20, is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. City Hall offices will be closed, and our next city council meeting is slated for January 28 at 5:00 p.m. here in the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all place hands for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item number three is agenda additions or deletions. I have two additions. Item number 18 is mayor's report. 18, mayor's report. Item number 19 is city administrators' report. City administrators' report. And we're going to delete number 14 entitled Jerry Henry. Delete item 14. Any other additions or additions? Any other additions or additions?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Item number four is consent agenda. Item number four is approval of council meeting minutes of December 10, 2019. 4B is approval of county payable listing for C appoint clerk, treasurer, Daniel Hickey. Item number four D is designate official newspaper Pelican Rapids Press. 4E is appoint city attorneys, Cricklebooth Law Firm and Lawson, excuse me, Larson Law Firm, P.C. Item number four F is designate official depositors Wells Fargo, Minnesota National Bank, Wells Fargo Investment and Belt Bank. Item number four G is approve expenses for fire, police, liquor store clerks, mayor, regional meetings and trainings. 4H is approve payment of administrator and clerk treasure bonds. 4I is approve payment of liquor store bond. 4J is Lakes Country Service Cooperative Annual Membership Renewal. 4K is Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Membership Renewal. 4L is Minnesota Council of Airports Membership Renewal. 4M is plumbers registration, which is Chad Hanson for Mr. Plumber. 4N is Pelican River Peasants Forever Raffle with DFW code 5252 on February 8, 2020. Item number 4O is Artill Lakes Country Association Community Collaborative Annual Membership. 4P is Household Hazardous Waste Day of August 5, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Public Works Facility. Item number 4Q is mileage of .757 cents per mile. Item 4R is staff reports of 4R1 library report, 4R2 police chief report, 4R3 financial report, which includes property cash to LM CIT 2019 given in $3,726. Your motion to approve.
Yeah, it was .575 cents for mileage.
You said 75.
Yeah, it's not that high, so I move to approve.
Second. Is there a second? Okay, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number five, Daniel, authorized credit card.
Yep, this is, um, this is just something that the auditor suggested that we do every year. The amounts haven't changed in the last, I've become, they've always been the same. Would you like me to read the amounts? Or are you good with that? It's just our credit card policy. Just to make you guys aware and remind you of what the credit card policy is for.
That seems to be working fine with the numbers where they're at.
Yeah, I haven't had any complaints.
Why does the library have $500 more?
I'm not sure. That was before my time to. I'm not sure what the reasoning was before, before that.
Yeah, that was kind of all set when Glennas was here, and that's how long an amount has been in place.
You get, you get many credit card statements. Do they buy like books with the credit card or?
Um, well, I think like the last thing I saw on there, they bought, uh, like, like the Star Tribune, um, annual membership. I think there's a couple different annual membership or subscriptions. I guess they'd be things like that on there.
Liquor store manager should use the credit card often, or is that all invoiced?
The majority of it's invoiced. It's for those little things that we don't have accounts set up for. But yeah, I wouldn't say, and they're not used a ton because we usually have accounts set up everywhere.
And like it says too, if it's, if it's a purchase that's over $500, they can't do it without authorization from above anyway.
I move to authorize.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number six is street and parks report, Brian Olson.
It'll take me less time than it did to read you the consent.
He'll get it right.
He'll be quick. Wintertimes with cloud. I think it's been about four times. One time, the fifth time, we just came in and opened up the roads because that was our last kind of storm we had that we dumped. Came in and opened everything up, then we came back the next day and finished. But, um, we're not doing that. We're moving snow lately, this way it seems, and then maintaining equipment also. Have had Aggies remove snow twice downtown this year, and that's just due to the fact that it's so much and it would take us so much more time to get it done and just trying to make the downtown business area a little, little cleaner quicker. So that's, that's why I've had them. Skating rink end. I've been very surprised at the skating rink this year. It has had, for the 20 days it's been open, it's had an average of 24 people there a day. Some were lower, some were higher, but that was the average of all. And it, kind of word has gotten out that, that we have skates there. And so it's been, you know, people are coming and using the skates and actually have requested larger sizes and things like that. So I met with Mrs. O'Brien at the elementary school today and actually got a couple extra bigger, or not extra, but larger sizes for, for those. And then also a lot of the laces have deteriorated. So we got some from that too. But with that, I need to hire two more, which was right after we hired last time. Going to get the two more I needed. I would like to hire Carson McNeil at the rate of 1035 and Aaron Statham at the rate of $10.81 for skating rink attendants. I move to approve.
Motion second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same.
Perfect. And the last, oh, thank you. The last thing I really have is, is we did the banners again, and I must tell you, so far that skid lift has been the best investment we've made in a long time. The guys went out and did that, and they came back and said, this is so much better than climbing a ladder and, you know, hauling everything around. So again, thank you for that, and that's my report unless you have questions.
Motion to accept the street and parks report. Second, discussion.
I want to compliment you guys on getting the snow out of, removed right away. I went over to Fargo the day after it stormed and the downtown area was so bad, it was almost impossible to get through there. And this was, I forget, a Friday or whatever it was, but came over here and things were moving and you guys did a good job of getting that snow moved, so.
Thank you.
What's the city's trigger on the snow again?
Well, it is, it is supposed to be two inches is what, what kind of trigger.
I had some people ask me. I said, I didn't know.
Or at, at the discretion. You know, it kind of depends. If we get less and it's windy, I'll maybe pull some plows out, pull, pull them out just to, especially on the outlying roads and stuff like that, but.
Any more discussion?
Well, last time was awesome because the streets of downtown was cleared for business, what, by the second day? So how do you decide that? Are you going to do, like this time, what are you going to do?
Um, this time I'm going to wait throughout the storm, the next one coming because they're, they're already telling me another one moving in tomorrow. So I'm not going to go down and move it tomorrow because we'll probably be plowing most of the day. So, and at that point, I'll judge by what's down there, whether we do it or I ask Aggies to do it. And like I said, when it's so much, their, their equipment is so much faster than what we can do, so.
So will the parking lane, or the, yeah, the parking lane be cleared then?
It should be. We will plow, you know, in the morning, and the state will come through again tonight, I, I promise.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Martin Kuffler, I'd like to add to what Councilman Foster mentioned. I had many compliments on the street department.
Thank you.
Do you guys use the bucket or the broom on the skid steer for the sidewalk?
Broom. Um, today we use the broom because of it. It was light and fluffy. All depends on, on depth too, you know, and how much we get. Sometimes we'll use the B blade, sometimes we'll use the blower, sometimes we use the, the broom. The broom does a better job, but it'll only take about that much snow and then it's done. You know, it gets plugged up and so.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting the street and parks report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you.
Item number seven is approve 2020 appointments to boards and authorities and also have a board 23rd planning commission vacancies.
Yep, you guys got a copy of it in your packet. Chairman Ben Seismus stepped down from the planning commission, so we need to fill that spot so the planning commission can get full again and then also decide who their chair is going to be. In years past, we've kind of taken some time when we've had vacancies and thought about people that, that would probably be interested in doing it. And then we, you know, I'd contact them and talk to them about possibly doing it. And I don't, I don't know if that's, I guess we could do that again, but my, also my thought was potentially just putting an ad in the paper and just tell people that we're looking for somebody on the planning commission. We do have a, like a little short, one-page, half-page application that we'd like people to fill out and that are interested. And they just, you know, give us their contact information and answer just one question. Why would you like to be on the planning commission? And then just take as many of them as we possibly can, can get, and then the council looks them over and decides who's going to fill that position based on the applicants that have applied. Does council have a preference? The one thing I know that was asked a, a couple of times is, is why having somebody that doesn't live in the, in the, in the city or own property in the city, why them being on the planning commission as opposed to somebody that does? And I guess in Ben's case, he just had a general interest. When I talked him about filling that position and being a part of that, and now he's decided not to. But going forward, I would like to basically try and find somebody that is in the city or owns property in the city. They have more of a vested interest in what happens, so.
Any thoughts or comments from the council?
Our downtown business owner, chamber members, you know, they're not all city residents. I think they have a vested interest in what goes on on the planning commission.
Sure.
You know, I'm not sure I would be too much of an agreement with that.
Majority of them are property owners, so.
Well, but they don't have to be.
Yeah.
They don't have to be, but a lot of the things that the, the planning commission, the work that they do, whether it's through the comp plan or whatever, really moves how, you know, how, in its, in some sense, how properties are taxed and everything else in the city. And so having people on the planning commission that actually own property and are responsible for those taxes and that type of thing, I think is, is, not to say that it could, it could be somebody outside the city, but I think, you know, there should be some preference there. And again, I get a bunch of applications to city council. If that's the route you want to take, we'll have the opportunity to look them over and decide who you think would be a good fit.
Have you done the advertising process in the past?
No, we have for some positions, like part board and others, but I cannot remember doing it for the planning commission.
I think the last time we did.
The planning commission?
Yeah, I remember we had applications that we brought.
You're right. So we did, yeah, it was the first time that we've done it that way.
I think that's a good way to get the word out. I mean, and then, you know, people that might not be having it on their radar, that they could do some public service, might read that and be interested at that point.
So they would be, would be looking for somebody to fill just his last year of his first term, and then obviously they could stay on beyond that. So we'll put an ad in the paper, get it out on Facebook, just looking for somebody that's interested in doing that. They can get, give me a call and find out more about what they do and what it's all about.
Mayor, I think we should, a lot of people don't know what it is. I mean, I didn't know what it was not that many years ago. So we get just like a little description of what happens. And I would really prefer to have residents or property owners, so.
Maybe I can get with Lou and we can put a little something in the paper that kind of describes what the planning commission's all about.
Okay.
And then, um, so that's what we'll do. You can see the rest of them. The only other thing that I wanted to, to bring up is the portfolios of the council and give the council an opportunity to look and see, this is where you guys were kind of positioned last year. Are you fine there? Do you want to make some, some revisions to it? One of the things that, that I, looking at this, when you think about the airport, and we've had a, a committee of, right now that's, that's working with S E H and MINDOT to update the airport layout plan and the CIP and stuff. And I see the airports under the, under the mayor's position, but the fact that we've got two pilots and they've been involved in that committee, that was just one area I thought maybe it would make sense if, if Councilman Foster or Councilman Strand would be interested in having that portfolio. And again, it's not like you're, you're really busy with these portfolios. If there's something that comes up and I basically need to talk to somebody about that particular area, I'd kind of rather talk to a pilot than the mayor. You know, when it comes to airport.
A lot of people would.
When it comes to airport activities. So it just, to me, that one made a little bit of sense, so, but whatever.
Would you just move me, or move airport to, just move that part of it up?
That's what I would do, or you can trade or whatever you want to do, but that's what I would do. I would just move that area up to that council person.
I think that's a good idea. Move it up to Foster's and, or mine, I don't care. I'll be there.
Is that fine with you, Steve?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
We'll move airport up to Foster. Daniel, if you make note of that, and then whatever else you would want to make.
I'll move, we keep the portfolios the same with that change of moving the airport over to mine. And if I get a second to that, I'll talk to it because I've got some reasons for that.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion.
Um, I have a discussion too. First reason, I understand the wisdom and the thinking of changing portfolios around. And in some ways, that would be a good idea to change them around, but we kind of get pushed by our constituents and things that we're interested, so we dig into what we're interested in. So I really don't see any big advantage to changing things. You know, I, Kevin and I have been on here, what, 11 years now?
Closer to.
I had dark hair when we started.
So did I.
Um, but, uh, you know, we're still learning things. I mean, stuff comes up, you still learn things. So I really don't see any advantage of changing things around.
Any more discussion?
I have some discussion. I would, I would like to have the police department portfolio. And my reasoning there is I have a pretty extensive police background and understand the workings of this police department or police departments in general. And true, a lot of things don't change, but there are some things that need changing. And I could speak to a lot of things that we don't need to get into now, but police department portfolio needs some work, and I'd like to be the one to work on it.
The only question I have is, based on what you said, it seems like you have information possibly that nobody else has.
No information, just background. See a lot of things that aren't what I consider right and that needs discussed. I can't make changes as the portfolio holder, but I can certainly feel more open to suggestions or discussing things with people.
And I think the council too, based on the, the direction and the decisions of the council over the last couple of years, especially this past year with the full-time and non-patroling chief and everything, that the police department is a work in process.
They continually are, no matter, no matter at what stage of the game the police department is. They are completely evolving all the time.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Steve. Do you want to make that amendment?
Oh, I'm thinking about it here.
But I, and I, I have no, nothing personal, but it, it seems like there's an axe to grind.
Nope, no axe to grind. Just changes need made. It's the police department, in my opinion, and from my viewpoint and from what I do here, it, it isn't evolving the way police department should. It's a dynamic operation. They change regularly, and this, this department is rather stagnant in, on many levels. And as I said, I can't change anything. I can just discuss things with Don, maybe Jeff, all of us, and try to listen. I just feel if I had the portfolio, my ideas will be listened to more clearly.
My, my thought is, and, and again, it doesn't matter if it's anyone's, my thought is if you've got things on your mind, or to this date, we haven't had a conversation.
You're right, we haven't.
Whether it's your portfolio or not, you know, my door is.
I understand that. I understand that. I just, I wanted a portfolio that I feel I can make a difference holding. I, for example, licenses. I don't even know what that portfolio is. I'll be honest. I'll never have an input or a recommendation for licenses. I don't know what that is. I would like to feel more useful as a councilman. And as a police department portfolio holder, I believe I can do that. Part of the reason for being on the council is for me and the desire to make things better for the city, and I have ideas.
Kurt, I respect your comments. I'm concerned, did you have an agenda going here? That makes me nervous. And we can do that as a.
That way, I haven't had an agenda since I started this council.
Well, you seem kind of angry about it. I.
Well, no, because here's why. What I've been thinking about this for a while, and I wasn't going to say anything because I knew it was negotiation year, and I didn't even know if the contract was settled yet. And I knew there was a union change, and that's all good. But I did say to my wife before I came tonight, I said, I'm going to bring this up tonight, since it's the night we normally do it. And I guarantee you I get pushback. And look what's happening. People think I have an agenda. I have no agenda.
But we can do this as a council. Anything that you.
I'm thinking about things to evolve. And the council would have to be involved in all of it. I can't make any decisions, but I know before, if we talked to people, say, like, I don't even feel comfortable talking to Jeff as a councilman without going through Don, and, and that's bad. I shouldn't have to do that.
Okay, do we want to make commitments?
How about we have Kurt work with you on the police department?
The only concern that I have is, again, whether Kurt's concerns are policy concerns or operational concerns, because the council is set policies, it's supervisors, the management that does the operations.
Right, and as a portfolio holder, I can't change anything, but I can have open discussions with Jeff and, and you and say, this is what I think, and this is what I think would be best.
And to be honest with you, Kurt, you don't need to go through me for a lot of that. You don't.
But I've heard that and felt that way on a lot of things.
You know, we have, we've had this conversation before about, you know, when to basically have conversations with me so I know what you're having conversations with, with staff about, and when you just go to staff. And, and, um, you know, for the most part, as long as you're not, if you're directing traffic, or a lot of cases, when you're having a request, the comment that's come up before, if you're requesting somebody to do something out there, then, then it's nice for me to know what that request is so I can make sure it's being taken care of.
I agree with that.
It's just comments.
You've had them discussions.
It's comments or, you know, suggestions, that type of thing. It doesn't necessarily.
My ideas for this whole police department is, I would like to see it, again, as it once was, a long-term place for these young guys coming into law enforcement because there's getting to be less and less of them. This department has again fallen to being a stepping stone in a great career for them somewhere else. There are ways simply, inexpensively, and simply to get these guys to do their whole career here, keep their families here, put their kids in school here.
Currently with our negotiations, we're working towards that.
Okay, and, and, so can I sit in on these negotiations without having the portfolio? Or new hires or interviewing? You know, I would, I would be very interested in doing a panel-style interviews, the way it used to be and still is in most departments, but it's fallen by the wayside in this city. These are all little things that erode the longevity of a police department. That's just to name a very few. And I know we're not in a police department discussion. I simply would like to hold the portfolio for the police department.
Changing the subject just a little bit here. We were talking about the airport. When we went through these meetings, even though, um, this kind of Brent's area, we went through this meeting, but we had three, four people there. Steve, myself, Don, um.
Brian.
Brian.
Which meeting?
On the airport.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And.
Because you have some expertise at that. You should have been part of it.
Well.
Just like you were handed the portfolio for the airport.
But that's.
Because Don would rather talk to a pilot than the mayor. So Don should therefore probably rather. probably rather talk to somebody that's been in law enforcement than the mayor.
But I do. The chief. But I'm just saying, that's who I go to. I didn't have...
The chief's not a port...
I get that.
And we did this airport meeting, but between the three or four of us, by having at least two people there that were there, we could bounce ideas, and I think we did a better job than if I would have been there individually, or if Steve would have been there individually. And if you disagree with me, speak up. Agree with me?
I agree.
But if there's a problem with the Police Department, I guess I'd like to see at least two people on it.
Great. Apparently the chief and a portfolio holder.
And by that, I mean the mayor and you.
I don't care if it's 10 of us.
No, and I don't... Whether you moved the portfolio or whether you brought up, can you sit in the union meetings, can you be a part of the interviewing process? I don't know why not, without having the portfolio, but if they want to give you the portfolio, that's totally okay.
Could you clarify a little bit, Coach Foster?
I would like to have you two guys work together on that.
So we both have that portfolio?
You've got police experience here. You've got it from the city's point of view. You've been on that for a long time, so... And I don't, you know, for myself, I don't go into those things, or I don't dig into that because...
Is that your amendment?
I will amend it to include Kurt and Brant on the police portfolio.
That's good.
Second then?
I have one more comment I just want added to the minutes.
Okay, let's... Okay.
It's part of this motion.
We need a motion to the amendment first.
Oh, okay.
No, you vote. We just got the amendment.
He seconded it.
We should vote on the amendment.
And then have comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
So all in favor of the amendments signify the same way?
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Okay, now?
Okay, Mike, are you making any...
I'm done, yes.
Okay, my comment to that is, it just drove home the fact that everything I've felt since I've been on this City Council is accurate. We aren't working as a team. You people think I have an agenda. You've all but said it, or did say it, or an axe to grind. I'm quite honestly offended, so I would like that noted. I'm here to do a job that I feel important. I mean, I ran for an election, was defeated more than once before I got onto this position. I haven't ground any axes or attacked anybody since I've been here. And I think the way this was treated was exactly the way I knew it was going to go. So I think this council definitely needs some help. And that's all I have to say.
Now we have to vote on the portfolio motion? Yeah, yeah, yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same?
Scare the appointments to boards and authorities other than finding a plan.
So do you need a motion to...
No, we're going to put it out in the paper for that.
And I just want to clarify, Steve Foster, you're okay with being acting mayor still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will you approve the whole, like, the whole appointment?
So would anyone like to speak to any of these other...
Was that your motion, Steve? To approve the whole appointment to boards and appointments?
No, my motion was just with the council.
Yeah, just the portfolio part.
Yeah.
Now we have to act on the whole council.
So now we've got to approve all these...
Yeah, all the others.
Planning council, park board.
Ivory board, all of it, yeah. I'll move to approve the 2020 appointments to boards and authorities.
Second then.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Then we'll to item number eight, approve city fee schedule.
Now, that's the fee schedule that was put in place last year. We haven't changed anything that I'm aware of. So basically, it's just moving forward what we did last year.
One question on this. We did that open burn permit. Didn't we say we were going to do that at $25?
I would have to go back and check, but the way I remember it is it was...
It says open burning $25.
Yeah, oh, that, but...
No, but the next one down, the open burn permit is $30.
Yeah, and I think that, I thought we were going to have the two separate prices.
Right, because the $25 one is the native grass out of Lake Region. The $30 one was for the normal, the open burn permit, the new one that you guys put in place.
That included the larger burns on it?
Right.
Yeah.
Because the one out of Lake Region, pretty much, is they come and they take care of it. There's no, nothing that the fire department has to do for that one. These that basically, the general population that comes in, wants to get an open burn permit, Trevor has to... They fill out paperwork, Trevor goes and meets with them, so there's a little bit more involved in it, and that's why one is 25, but the new one that you guys put in place was 30.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? Are these fees adequate to cover expenses for...
Well, I'm not going to say that, because we haven't really analyzed them that much. But for the most part, I think so, yeah. I think, I think... Yeah, I think...
They're all staying the same from last year, right?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve them then. All of them.
Motion's your second?
No, second.
Motion second to approve the 2020 city fee schedule, discussion?
I have a question, as long as I saw it. The vehicle impound, do we do with any, anything with the impounded vehicles? I see them parked, I mean, I see a lot of them parked as I drive into the treatment plant, but I mean, do we do anything with them?
Yeah, they all have their own little story, and Jeff could, the chief could probably speak to it a little bit better than I could, but I know some of them, once we can clear title on them, and there's a process for that, and that sometimes takes quite a while, once that happens, and we actually can do something with them, we might donate them for training for the fire department, we might send them down to roadside, we might sell them, we might keep them. I mean, when I say keep them, the good ones that are operational, that's like the Buick that we drive now was one of those vehicles at one time, so...
It's happened to see it as we...
I know there's a number of them out there, and I'm sure one has a story, or Jeff's working on getting rid of them, because we do need to clear that thing out.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number nine, set time, place, a date of regular City Council meeting, as of right now. We are 5:00 PM on the second and last Tuesday of each month here at City Hall.
I move to keep everything the same except 4:30 in the summer.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion second, discussion. What is summer?
My busy time when I can't be here till 6:00.
I mean, you said it was for open comment, you...
I just, I think we're doing, we do a disservice to the... If people don't get off work till 5:00, they can't be here till 5:00, and this whole, well, we'll stop and we'll go back. I mean, you can look at my minutes. Every agenda I've, I'll pull one from the past year. We were done with...
I pulled the one I don't have written down.
Well, you're doing that.
5:07. 5:07, we're done with the consent agenda, which is the first half of the agenda. 5:07. So we're allowing people seven minutes to get out of work and get here to participate in the citizens' comments, which is number two, and we say, "Well, we'll go back to them." But you can't tell me, the people that have, that come in here, if we say at, when we're done with the item number 12, "Oh, Mr. Johnson, do you have anything you want to talk about during the headlights? No, thank you." These little old Scandinavian women that are going to come here, Pucker factor involved, they are not going to say anything. So I just, I think that... I'm really hesitant to change anything also, because we want to make it more... And I've had, I've had written as low as 5:03, because we clipped through some stuff.
You know how many comments we've had over the year?
Okay.
Want to guess?
Well, I've written those down, too. Do you want me to go through and show you?
I've got them all right here. There's five.
We've had people that's...
Until you pissed everybody off at the library, we only had one.
Well, that's five people that probably couldn't have made a comment.
Well, we would have allowed them to talk, I think.
Well, that's why we have the agenda items, so it's more precise of what we're doing. Otherwise, we're hell or skill, we're all over the place. We don't know what to do next.
And again, you know, it's not, I'm just one guy out of the group, but in the summertime is my busy time. I'm one hydraulic hose away from not coming in till 10 o'clock at night. And that's just my life, so... I mean, it's starting, you know, it's a half hour. I get it, but it's a half hour.
What would you say summer is? What do you define summer as? What month?
Well, we just do it on nice days.
So rainy days, we can start with 5:00.
We're six, I don't care.
I just...
Now, is this for you or for the people coming to talk?
Well, this, yes.
Yes, both?
Well, I happen to fall into the 5:00 people.
I don't want you...
Motion second on the floor, correct?
Yep.
I don't want Kevin mad at me either.
I don't want him mad, yeah. I just, I won't be mad at you, Steve. I just won't vote for it.
Hold on, I want to define what summer is.
Summer would be June whatever till...
June, July, and August.
Yeah. Well, when's the first day of summer? Is June...
June 21.
June 21 till last day of summer, September whatever.
No, September.
That's summer.
That would be your definition?
Well, June, July, August, something like that.
Well, what are you thinking? We got to define it.
Okay, that does...
June, July, August, July, August or something. Okay with you, Steve?
Yeah.
Daniel, we want to read the motion.
Okay, so motion by Strand, seconded by, sorry, Foster, to set the council meetings for 2020 for the second Tuesday and last Tuesday at 4:30 in the summer, which is June, July, and August.
5:00 to 6:00 at time.
Yep, yep.
Any more discussion?
We do a real call, vote on this.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. Danielle, want to read the name?
Yes, I do. Strand...
Aye.
Ballard...
Aye.
Markraff...
Aye.
Foster...
Aye.
And, oh, Frazier.
Aye. Okay, motion passed.
Sorry, Kevin.
So expect, just expect an empty seat every once in a while, that's all I can say.
Okay, item number 10, February 25th, 2020 council meeting. Danielle's going to speak to her.
Yes, so on February 25th, that is caucus night, and it's also one of our regular scheduled 5:00 meetings now. And so on that night, we cannot hold a council meeting after 6:00 PM, so I am suggesting that we just have a shorter meeting that night.
Can't we just make that a suggestion all the time?
Yes, open suggestion. Yeah, so then that way we could get, you know, the checks. We could probably get quite a bit done in an hour, but we just have to, we'd have to be done by 6:00.
So if we have business left at 6:00, we have to dismiss and leave the business going after 6:00?
We can do it.
Give me the 4:30.
Yeah.
Call it Indian summer.
Do you need a motion on that, Danielle?
No, I don't think so, because our meeting's already set, so...
Any more discussion on that? Thank you, Danielle. Item number 11 is OTLCA slash City HCH agreement.
There was a copy of this in the packet also. I met with Nick Leonard, and we kind of talked a little bit about how things went last year with Historic City Hall and the Tourism Center. And for the most part, this agreement just reflects the date changes, because if you remember, the initial agreement, our first shot at it or first try at it was, it was to end December 31st of 2019. And so that's what kind of prompted us to sit down and take a look at what we want to do for next year. Other than the dates, the only thing that kind of changed was under Article 5 of the term, we put language in there so that we don't have to come back and revisit this at the end of 2020, even though it says it's a one-year term, ending on 31st of December 2020. But the additional language that we added just basically says upon, you know, after that, it'll just be a perpetual agreement, unless either party wants to provide a written notice or whatever to terminate with a 90-day notice, basically. So that way, we don't have to come back to it. But I think we still would, I think it's very important that we still get together and talk about how things are going. In fact, during these, this set down and discussion on this, we talked about it being important that at some point here in the very near future, we get together and we sit down with Dina and Nick and the volunteer group or whatever, and just kind of have a little pal about how things went from their perspective. But from the agreement's perspective, it was just changing it so that it's more than just ending at the end of one year.
Any questions about it? So this evening, we have Outer Tilt County Commissioner Wayne Johnson, Nick Leonard from Outer Tilt County, and Dean Johnson also with us. So do you have any comments?
Your Honor, council members, I'm here in my capacity as Secretary and Treasurer for Outer Tilt Lakes Country Association, and knowing, as Don mentioned, I think it was a good first year, worked out some, a lot of the bugs, and the Board of Directors for Outer Tilt Lakes Country Association is happy to give this another year, and hopefully it is equally as successful. And so just, it's a, it's a good way for Outer Tilt Lakes Country to continue to be present here in Rapids. And as you know, that's really their mission, to promote the region as a desirable place to visit, live, and work. And so being there in Historic City Hall at that Tourism Center is a great way to honor that mission.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, no other comments?
I'll move we adopt the agreement.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number 12 is Chamber slash City Historic City Hall lease agreement. This is another one that we initially had just a one-year deal on it with Chamber renting the upper space at Historic City Hall. And I changed this agreement similar to the other one to where we won't have to revisit this at the end of one year. It'll just continue until either party in this case decides they want to terminate the agreement with a 30-day notice. The lease to the Chamber, or the, the rent to the Chamber was $250 a month, and it remained.
the rent to the Chamber was, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a month and it remained at that and this council wants to change it, but the Chamber has taken a look at this. I sent it to them prior and they've acted on it and already signed it, so they're in favor of it as long, as long as the council.
I move to approve the daily's agreement as well.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All in the same. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, consider resolution number two zero two zero dash zero one, resolution along wire slash automated bank payments. Daniel?
Um, this is another thing I have to have, um, passed every year for our audits and it's just giving me permission to make automatic payments and wire transfers. The majority of them are like my payroll taxes, um, that I have to do twice a month. I just have to have approval from you guys to do that.
I move to approve resolution number two zero two zero dash zero one. Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Explain, just say more about why do you move the money by tool?
The one, like my examples were payroll taxes. I have to automatically pay like federal tax, state tax, those have to all automatically be paid now. Um, sometimes, um, I, like if a bond payment's due and the, the check isn't there on time, I've had to wire that. But in that case, everything, all the money that's moved is signed by me and an elected official. So I always have somebody sign off on all of them.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in the same. Motion carried. Let's move down to item number eighteen. Mayor, just a few of the things I've done here, boy, it's been a uh, November the 12th, I received calls off from, uh, Jeff Rhodes from the St. Paul, Minnesota Department of Transportation regarding your complete streets project will be done here in 2024 and we, uh, discussed various aspects of that, including amenity zone, various concepts of the, the project, public involvement, uh, traffic lane turns, uh, roundabouts, many roundabouts, snow removal in the wintertime, and, uh, uh, contractor guidelines for the project. Also visited local residents, uh, regarding this project in this past month. I've been having several discussions. On, uh, December twelfth, attended the Prairie Lake and Lizzie Lake River Restoration Bid Opening Meeting and as I serve on the advisory board for that committee. Uh, December thirteenth, I met the Administrator Solga and Nick Leonard of Otterdale County Reserve regarding, uh, the motion we passed this evening regarding, uh, Otterdale County Lakes Association City Hall Historic City Hall Agreement. Uh, submitted to Mayor, Mayor's Column Pelican Crest this month, uh, met with Administrators Solga and Chief State and regarding police union contract and we had a couple, three times regarding that, that subject. Tended to Mayor's Breakfast in Battle Lake on January seventh, uh, attended the meeting of, uh, Administrator Solga and Chief State and then also the union rep uh, this past week, uh, thirteenth of January, uh, met with Administrator Solga regarding our city council agenda for this evening and then I guess that wraps up my report. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any further meetings planned for the Police Department and are they, is the contract settled or?
No, no, we, we have another, um, meeting scheduled for Friday. What time? Two o'clock.
Okay, uh, one comment on that. I think we need to get, uh, West Central Turkey or Jenny O-Turkey involved in that discussion because when that project is going to be done, it will really affect them with the trucking they have.
You're talking about the 2024 project?
Yeah.
I'm hoping somebody from West Central Turkey's will be on the advisory committee that starts having some of the discussions when Mindot gets into the design stages here.
We have to stress that to them as somebody who's not much to do there.
The kicker with that, and I don't want to get on too much of a discussion here about that, but the kicker with that is Mindot wants input from the community, but their, that their design meetings will be up in D L. They're not going to have a lot of design, there will be their communications people talking with people in Pelican, but the input, the, the advisory committee or the community committee, whoever's a part of that discussion, it won't happen here because all their resources and engineering and documents are up there. So a lot of that design discussion will be held in Detroit Lakes. That's the difficulty.
Okay, thank you. Item number nineteen, City Administrators Report.
The normal meeting with the department heads, um, twice a month and, and working on the agenda and making sure everything's set for that is kind of the normal. And then, uh, I did revise and meet with Nick Leonard and talk to the Chamber regarding the two agreements that you just approved. I've met with a couple more engineering firms that come in and have questions regarding the 2024 project. Um, because the complete streets concept plan was done and some of the discussions that we've had from, from the community as it relates to that, you know, they're really interested in what's important to the city in this project as far as trying to get it done and, and, uh, you know, um, you know, do we, does the city feel that two paths along fifty-nine and one oh eight completely through the community is, is something that we, we feel is realistic and that type of thing because that's what the plan shows. So the engineers want to just hear from, from us and so I've met with a couple more of them and talked to them. Uh, I've, uh, met with Apex to discuss different aspects of Project Ninety, which is the CASA county roads in, in the city that we're going to be looking at doing, uh, this year. Um, continue to work on with Lakes Country Service Co-op. All the new computers are in place. Uh, we've, we're still kind of getting some tweaks out and we still are coming across some things that since we upgraded to Windows ten and, and, uh, the newness of Windows ten has kind of created some hiccups with Banyan. And so one of the things that I'm looking at doing is upgrading from, um, because of Microsoft Office ten, uh, looking to upgrade to Microsoft Office twenty sixteen. And right now, to my knowledge, that's not going to be an, an additional expense to the city to do that. Uh, we're going to try and do that slowly, so, uh, we tried on one computer and we don't have glitches and it kind of helps with some of the things we're seeing. Then we'll trans, transition everybody over to twenty sixteen. Um, we did finish the work, uh, Apex Engineering Eye on the, the transportation alternative full application and that's been submitted. And we will be going down in February to, uh, they have, uh, everybody has submitted applications for that G A grant. Um, comes down and they present their application and project to the committee. So, um, we'll be preparing to do that, uh, Bob Schlemer and I, um, in February here. Uh, again, Brent alluded to, you know, I've been spending time gathering information, um, looking through the numbers. I continue to do that as it relates to the union negotiation and preparing for the next meeting. Um, Brian and I met with the Lakes, or the, uh, League of Minnesota Cities Loss Control Person. We do that every year. The league has a, uh, their loss control department, they focus on certain things and they come and they sit down and they go over things with the city just to kind of give us suggestions and then they go and look at the different facilities and stuff like that too and, and, uh, then they provide us with the report on the things that they saw. Just to kind of try and head any potential losses, you know, off before they happen type thing. This year, we talked a lot about A D A and, and stuff like that too, so. Um, received, inspected, and accepted the 2020 police S U V. So that right now is down, getting all the equipment installed on it and hopefully we'll get that back in, in a week or two. And we'll get that new car out on the road. Every year I have annual reports that I have to submit to the state and so I've submitted the annual tier-two emergency and hazardous chemical inventory that the city has. We have it at the pool, the wastewater plant, the water plant, and the shop. And there's one more too. There's a total of five of them that we have to submit and then they send us bills, depending on how much chemical we use. And also the, um, Wetland Conservation Act requires an annual report from the city. That's filed every year, so I did that. Uh, I've had conversations with the county and the county's engineer regarding the lot split and the rezone of the northeast property and we'll continue to work at that. That's an item that, um, is going to be probably sent to and going to the Planning Commission uh, to start looking at that as we hear back from the county and kind of preparing to, for them to move their, their shop based on the council's discussions with them. I have spent some time working with Partnership for Health. Again, if you remember, we got that city bike and pedestrian planning to do a city and, uh, bike and pedestrian plan for the city of Pelican Rapids through Partnership for Health. We got awarded for that grant and so now they are looking for a little bit of help and putting, putting together an advisory, advisory committee to go through that process and that's kind of goes over several, several months of 2020. At the end of the day, the city will be presented with a bike and, um, pedestrian and bike plan, which is kind of, the timing of it's kind of right because we're going to start looking at the 2020 project and all that stuff. Plus the funding, hopefully that we get this legislative session for the trail that goes from Pelican out to, um, Maplewood State Park. So hopefully it all kind of comes together. And then, uh, I met with, uh, S E H Engineers, Councilman Foster, Councilman Strand, and Brian Olson the other day regarding the airport layout plan and, um, it looks like we'll have some information to present to the council at the end of the month. Regarding that, that's my report. Any questions for Don?
I have a question. We had pictures of the library in our, or, uh, packet. What, what are we supposed to say or do or something?
That's a question for Councilman, uh, Markcraft. Uh, the pictures where you had the icicles hanging, uh, was that supposed to be?
It's ice damming.
Yeah, actually, and I didn't know where, if I should, you know, I, I forgot to add a library report to the.
Yeah, I was away on vacation.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I attended the last meeting, so I don't know if you want me to, since I forgot to add it to the agenda, do you want me to hold that till the next meeting or that's up to?
I want to hear.
If you're prepared for it, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, I'm, uh, we had the library meeting on January sixth. And they were talked a lot about the ice dam, about the ice issues. Um, she did say that I had to question if the heat tape was on and it was, it's, it was off. It was off at the point at that time and it's, but it's been on, so it hasn't been consistently on. It's her words, off and on. So I, I don't know if that would alleviate that, if that would stop that, if that would do we make, I mean, again, that's it's one of those weird things of it's our building, but we don't really have any control over it. So I mean, do we make it mandatory that it's on from December one to March thirty or, I mean, I don't, I don't know. But they talked a lot about the dam, uh, the ice dam and through that, they, that led to the discussion of snow removal by the, by the city. So I don't know, I mean, I know we have a agreement, uh, maintenance agreement for that. They made us, the, a statement was made that the city crews have not gotten off of the skid steer and cleared to the door at all this year, so they've been shoveling. And they've been concerned because the skid steer, and the reason I asked the question of the broom versus the bucket tonight to Brian was that one of their issues that they have down there is if they come through with the skid steer, that the tires of the skid steer, uh, make the ice pack and then that freezes and that's where people are slipping, so.
And it's making, I think it's making it harder. I brought that up to me to.
So then they have to, yeah, then they have to go through and chip, try to chip that ice out after the fact, so.
I had a library board member vote for me and, I mean, I don't know if they were speaking for themselves or the little library board, but they didn't want to see the skids, skid steer on the sidewalk.
And that was the that was the, kind of the consensus at the board is that if, if, if the city was not going to use clear up to the door or that area with anything, with not using other than the skid steer, they would rather not have the skid steer. They requested the, the snow blower, if the snow blower could be brought up there. I don't know how it works, so.
Well, you know, again, I'm just listening to your report because I was on vacation, but the argument to the snow blower, that's going to leave a skim coat.
Well, and
even worse than a broom.
That was their, and that's why I asked if, how often they use the broom and if, you know, what kind of hassle is it to drive back and forth to bring, I don't know. So that was their concern. They wanted me to bring it up that they would rather not have the skid steer on the sidewalk if that was the only option that was going to be, be done, that they would rather do it themselves. And then there was a discussion of hiring a snow removal guy or person to come in to take care of that, but that real, that wasn't finalized either. They, then they got into the who takes, who's, you know, is the city going to pay for that for the, because of the maintenance agreement is the live and it never really got.
That was done in the past.
That's been, that, that has been done in the past, yes, but.
Who made the bill then, does anybody remember?
The library did.
I, I, I want to say Annie made it sound like the, the library took care of that, but.
That seems legitimate to me simply because I'm on the library board, but I don't always agree with all the library practices, so, uh, I do agree that if, if this council's going to offer snow removal, that if they choose to deny the removal, it would have to come.
And again, the, there was an issue with, and that's, so I don't know if we need to look at the agreement if this, if city staff is expected to clean from the door right away in the morning and then they, then they're responsible for it the rest of the day or I, I didn't get a chance to look at that agreement, so.
Kevin, with the skid steer, can't they go up and then just pull back with the bucket and scrape it clean? Is that what we're talking about by the door?
They'll have to drive up.
Right, and it's, yeah, but.
Driving on it with.
You come back and you scrape it off.
Can I, can I just quick, just make a comment? Because I have that, have them right in front of the first city hall. And if you get to it right away, it's not a big deal. A, a plastic shovel will scrape it up.
You're talking like the pack for the.
No, I mean, that's what I'm talking about.
The troughs.
That's where the trough is.
Yeah.
It's fairly easy to get right away. Um, salt takes it very easily. I, you know, I mean, some are more environmentalists than others and I'm not like throw as much salt down as it takes to, to clear it off, you know, so um, it's workable, um, and it's, but it is a pain, you know, it's that, but at the same time, I would rather that than have to shovel that whole area.
It's a big area.
It is.
And there was also a, a friends of the library person there that made the statement that she has that issue at a store downtown also, so, which would lend to that. Um, yeah, so I mean, it was, they wanted me to, to, to bring that up to, so I don't know if we want to talk and probably should ask Brian that when he was here, but if that's something we want to look into or communicate with, with them about that.
I think the ice pack too, can, it, it's going to lend itself to moisture consistency in the snow. If it's highly wet snow, it's going to turn to ice the minute they drive on it. If it's fluffy, light snow, with a leaf blower, it's not going to back on there.
Don, do you want to correspond to Mike?
Yeah, I'll talk to him. It's too bad he wasn't part of this conversation. Right, yeah. Also, I'll email you. It's my fault.
I'll email you a copy of that agreement sheet. But the other thing that I want to comment on, the first with the ice, it seems to me, and we'll have to go back and look at the minutes, but the last time we had ice damming that caused interior damage inside again, and the insurance company said, if you're not going to do something about this, we're going to stop it, you know, you could lose your insurance coverages, but I thought the council did make the decision that 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 is supposed to be turned on and left on, not on and off. I thought you guys took that position already.
But you can't have ice like that. You, you'll have damage, big time.
My understanding is if she turns it on and leaves it on, it will not form like that. It'll stay melting.
It will stay melted. But the comment was made that she is at the point now, she being Director Rig, that she is at the point where she is looking, checking for leaks, where they've leaked in the past. So, she's obviously concerned to that point.
So, when we go to do the roof, we'll be talking a lot of extra expense here.
Yeah, well, we repaired all the, there was a room that was repaired, a wall that was repaired a couple of years ago because of the leakage in there. So, that needs to be turned on again and left on.
Is that a flip of the switch that it turns on?
Yeah, just plug it in, I think.
Is that a thousand dollars a month, Kirk? Is that what I'm remembering?
I remember it's really high. I don't remember the number.
I mean, it's terrible.
I mean, extremely inefficient and rotten heat tape, but that's.
You're talking about salt. I, I actually threw salt on my roof. You're probably not supposed to do that, but it works.
It works.
You would get rid of that right now.
Yeah. Okay, hang on. Uh, yeah, they approved their 2020 budget as they presented it. And then, with the, with the caveat that they would adjust that as the wage.
Cola.
The cola, yeah, that thing. Other than that, I think that's, that's it.
I just got one more comment on that. I don't know that it's a good idea to turn the heat tape on now because you're going to end up melting all that stuff underneath there first and it has no place to go because of the rest of the ice and then you're going to back it up as soon as possible.
Okay, but another real trick is you can take that electrical, you know, you can buy a cord that, you know, and just, you make a couple troughs there and it will run down there. Or with salt.
They have to do something.
Yeah, that's just, I couldn't believe that.
And we also talked about the roof, but the, meaning the roof project. We just have to, we haven't, we haven't, as a roof committee, have not gotten back together since the last meeting in early December, so.
And I know, speaking of that, I saw in the minutes too that there was some discussion by the library board talking about removing that awning.
Yes.
Is that a library board decision or a city council decision?
That was, well, it's, it's part.
The committee came up with it.
It's part.
Roof committee.
Right, but it's part of the, it was, it was an add-on or a potential add-on to the, to the plans.
So, an alternate.
It was an alternate, but as a committee, we thought it would be, we should just include it as, as part of the project. And it hasn't, I don't think it's gone to either board or council.
Yeah, because the council would have to have final say on whether to alter the building.
Are we talking about that open on the southeast?
No, it's the, be the south, excuse me, the north, that north kind of awning.
If we're walking in from mill.
Yep. Okay, but we also, as a council, will have to make a decision of.
Not walking in from Milwaukee.
You're walking from the parking lot.
The drop is the parking lot.
The parking lot.
The north, the north canopy over the entrance door.
And then, the other alternate.
The size problems there too.
The other alternate was filling in that cutout or that, cutout in the ceiling that, or the roof that.
On the east door?
Yes.
Correct.
But as a council, we also have to talk about the roof, color steel and that kind of.
Is that, is that committee slated to meet sometime soon?
You know, I haven't heard a word, so.
I'm not on the committee.
Brian, myself, Wayne, and Sue.
Okay, well, keep us updated. Thank you. This time, we're kind of recessed our city council meeting and go into a EDA meeting. And you have a jet before you enter the pocket. At this time, and it was 6:15 PM, I'd like to call a meeting recorder. Item number two is agenda additions or additions. Are there any? Any additions or additions? Is there a motion second to approve the agenda?
So, move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried. Item number three is election of officers. And we recovered that.
Well, it's in the minutes too, what they were.
That was from last year.
Right, yeah.
I'll make a motion to leave all the officers in place.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried. Item number four, approval of minutes from January 9th, 2019, which were included in the packet.
Move to three.
One second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried. Item number five, membership renewal for Greater Minnesota Partnership done.
Yeah, that Greater Minnesota Partnership is an offshoot of the Greater Minnesota Coalition, Greater Minnesota Cities. The partnership has a lot to do with economic development activities with the legislature and that type of thing. And again, we've belonged to it the last few years. The membership is $500 and it comes out of the EDA that we take it out of, so.
What do we get for our 500 bucks?
Lobbying for economic development dollars for, you know, they, they kind of, in some sense, overlap a little bit with what the coalition people do down there already. They lobby the legislature for economic development stuff. It could include grants for, for, you know, funding a grant. When I say grant, sometimes it's loan, but it might be some grants as it pertains to environmental stuff, the wastewater plant, housing, you know, anything that deals with trying to get dollars into Greater Minnesota through lobbying the legislature. And a lot of it has to do with housing and business development, that type of thing.
Can you recommend it?
Yes.
So, move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried. This time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the EDA meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Meeting adjourned. Now, we're going to reconvene our city council meeting and item number 16 is review and approve the EDA's action. Motion to approve the EDA's action.
So, move.
Thank you.
Motion second, discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I know it's been brought up in the past, so I'll just bring it up now. Is there, what is the, is there any benefit to having an EDA that's outside of the council?
It has been talked about, yeah.
Because personally, this just seemed silly that we just did this.
What is the, you know what statute says on that, Don?
Well, it was create, when the city determined to put this together, and a lot of cities, the EDA, they're the city council, you know, and in the past, the city councils in the past, some of them have been active as the EDA, you know. You guys, the EDA has taxing authority and I think that would be maybe the one thing that might be of some concern is you'd be creating a separate entity, just like the hospital district, you now have created a separate entity that has taxing authority in the city. And, you know, in the past, what councils have done is they've taken the time to, to, you know, have discussions surrounding different projects. It was the city, the EDA slash city council that, that did the work to fund the, the spec building that was put up in the industrial park because the EDA has the authority to buy land and, and, you know, taxing authority. So, you can put together projects like that. And it's just a matter of getting active and doing stuff.
How would that, what, how do you do that?
You basically, just like, you know, you have discussions, you have more EDA meetings than nights that you guys have council meetings, you can have EDA meeting and put up, and plan a project or have discussions about economic development and, and once you come up with, you know, one of them might be, for instance, trying to do some commercial rehab or, or if, you know, we talk about the, you guys have had discussions about the incentives. Well, the EDA can basically meet and, and talk about and put together some EDA funds and put some funds away to try and incentivize some business. You know, you'd have to define what that would be. And then, you know, any, any project of, you know, economic development or housing or anything like that can be done through the EDA. A lot of times, it's just been the city council doing it.
So, the incentives that we've talked about, that we've talked about.
Like with the county.
Often last time, often last year.
Big lots and.
I mean, is that something that we would?
You can credit EDA for doing?
Well, the city council did it. You guys basically worked with and approved the tax abatement for housing, residential housing, kind of piggybacking off what the county was doing. It was the council that did that. But you guys can do other things. It can be the council or it can be the EDA that.
Doesn't the council have to approve the EDA's actions at some point?
You do, yeah. And as, and because the EDA is the council, yeah, you know.
It's due to approve.
When it comes to a separate body out there, like the hospital district or whatever, that, that is presenting a tax levy, I don't know whether they have to come to the council and get that levy approved.
The hospital district doesn't, but I would think of the EDA since it's for this community, but I do not like the idea of another entity having taxing authority.
I bet. Counselor.
It may work differently, sorry, Wayne Johnson, County Commissioner. To Mr. Markcraft's question, the county, CDA, EDA, all of those, HRA, all of those have to be approved by the county board. So, they're separate boards. They request budget and we approve it, deny it, question it and things like that. And so, they, I don't believe the EDA itself has taxing authority. I believe they request a view, it's a separate levy, but I believe the city council has to approve that levy when they approve all levies. I may be mistaken on city government. I'm not an expert on that. I can tell you that at the county, the HRA comes to us, the CDA comes to us as part of the HRA. We approve all, they're independent boards. I happen to sit on both, Kirk, sorry, Mr. Markcraft. But, but at the end of the day, we approve all of that stuff, okay? We have a CDA, as you well know, that we're very active with now. They are wholly, there's two commissioners on there, but there's like seven business owners on there. And they're coming to us and, and school board members and those kinds of things. But they're coming to us with recommendate. We basically give them a budget and we say, go do it. So, to answer your question, I'd like, I'd have to do some, or Mr. Solga would probably have to do some research because I think you council members would approve any levy or any budget that they would have. That's my, that's how it works at the county. I guess that's all I can say to that point. And ours is nine members?
Nine members.
Nine members on ours. Independent from the HRA, the HRA has six separate members that, that only one of them shares. We try and keep them married together a little bit, so we've got Commissioner Rognes on both the HRA and the CDA. That way, we know what both are doing, you know, and then he'll report back to the county board. Just as a suggestion for all of you, that's how, that's how the county operates theirs. And can I have one more minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a request, Mr. Solga, of the transportation advisory and DL. If the council would see so fit, I serve on the technical advisory panel for, for Min. Section District Four. I would like to be a part of that for the city of Pelican Rapids or at least be involved in, in, in all of those meetings that are going on up there. If the city so chose to appoint me or to put me on there or whatever the process is, I'd like you to consider that because I think I'd be a good fit since I'm district wide on the advisory panel for the county. I think, I don't think it would be a conflict for me to be on there for this particular item. That's, but maybe, Don, maybe you know more about that than I do. Okay, I just request that, think about it. You don't have to do anything today, but I would request that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don, would the League of Minnesota Cities, and the EDA, EA?
Probably they would. You know, Wayne's probably right that it's just another board that basically does all of the activities, but it's based off of a levy that you guys set. They would, they would, if that's the case, if that's the way it works, they would come to, to the city council with a budget and they'd say, we'd like to have this much money for economic development and you decide on how much you're going to give it.
And again, the only reason I ask is, I can, Casey Rested was here for, and I can't even remember why he was here, but he made a comment. He said, do what you done, get what you got. And that, and I've thought about that, I probably think about that once a day, ever since he said that. And, I mean, we just got to start doing something different in town to, I mean, we have empty stores in town that have been empty since I was a little kid and that's a long time ago.
But we're working on, Don's coming up with the list for us, you know, that's a good project though.
I'm just kind of, you know.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay, any more discussion? We have a motion second.
Oh, no, okay. I thought we were adjourning. I'm sorry.
That's so excited. I don't think I. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried.
I know, come on, that's kidding.
Item number 17, adjourned.
So, move. You already made a motion. I'll second it then.
Motion second.
I'm all right.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. What are you going to be for?